I get everybody's attention, let me get going, we've got a full agenda tonight. So I'd like to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. And first item on the agenda is public comments for items not on the agenda for discussion, not action. And as always, if you have any comments to make along those lines, we ask that you keep it to a three-minute timeframe or less. Are there any such comments? Pips, please? So you want to stand up here next to the chair, the empty chair as if we're, pretend we're at the Democratic Convention from five years ago.
I give this.
Yeah?
Thank you for the chance to provide a short update. I broke these things down because I wanted to get the wording right, so I'm just gonna read.
Can I just, sorry, can you back up? Because your stomach is the only thing that's showing. For anyone that's going to speak, just please try to stand relatively to where she is and speak up as much as you can to the camera, they'll catch you in, so then that way your face is what's on the screen.
Thank you, thank you. So, comments that we put together thoughtfully. Thank you for the chance to provide a short update on the Library Edition project. It is funded by the Maine State Library and the Maine Department of Economic and Community Development, federal part of funding. We'd like to inform the select board and the entire Chauvique community on some challenges we've encountered and give you a status of the current project. As you know, the Chauvique Island Library is a nonprofit organization overseen by 12 member board trustees, many of whom are here at the table in the back, serves as a public service to our community. We thank you for the letter of support from the Town of Chauvique that we included in our proposal to the Maine State Library, this was a really important part of our package. It also included a survey community of members who overwhelmingly supported an addition for remote work. This project also aligns closely with the current and future mission of the Town of Chauvique, comprehensive plan to encourage a year-round community and promote small businesses. We feel that it's important that we inform the community about several specific challenges. First, we want to say that we're optimistic that the project will move forward in some form that benefits the community and addresses the needs that were identified in our surveys, focus groups, and interviews. Recent communications with the Hall Board made clear our lack of agency in the partnership and caused us to question pursuing improvements to a space we don't own or control, which decreases our ability to respond to community needs now and in the future. The Maine State Library was contacted unbeknownst to the library unprofessionally and potentially damaging the project, the library and the community relationship with the state library. The tribal nature of this community building has not served the library well, and we will investigate alternative options. We would like community help with this in order to protect the more functions of the library. In a recent report from New York Public Libraries, quote, "Public libraries, those enduring and adaptive position institutions, positive institutions, provide us with information, inspiration, and connection for staying resilient in adversity and for imagining and creating more fulfilling lives in private communities." We sincerely hope to implement the design that we spent months of time, energy, and money to serve the community needs that we identified, but in light of the challenges presented, we are also going to consider alternative options.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pips. Other comments from the public, items not on the agenda, or comment not action? Mark?
This is a comment and an early observation. I would like to thank Vika and the new town road crew for their plowing technique and not getting too aggressive with the edge of our expensive paved roads and digging them up. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Any other comments? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the first agenda item, Town Reports. Vika, TA report.
All right, good evening, everybody. So TA report, there's a few things on it, a lot of it is in the packet, there are just one or two things that did not make it on the TA report that I was bringing up towards the end. So the first thing is something that has been ongoing, committee members needed. As of right now, Board of Adjusting Appeals is still in need of two board members. The planning board is also in need of two board members. These are the two planning, or the two boards that play a big role within the community and a lot of the decision-making, so it is in the best interest of the community and the fairness of the process if they are full boards and it is as a result of such situation that there has been a pending, you know, application that is unable to be discussed as a result of not having enough members. So if anyone knows of anybody, if anybody's interested, by all means, please submit an application. Code of Conduct, at the last meeting, the select board adopted a code of conduct that they had worked in or worked on last spring and winter, and so the expectation is not only for the select board to abide by the code of conduct, but every single board member that joins any board that is under the town, the current plan is to send it to the current boards and to let them know that it is something that has been adopted and that going forward with the start of the new fiscal year, with any applicant that the town receives that the select board approves, that individual will sign an oath in addition to the code of conduct, and the purpose is really so everybody across the board has an understanding and has written guidelines on how they should behave as an elected, appointed official for the Town of Chauvique Island. The next thing is Chandler's Dock. Last week, I learned that the work that was due to begin next winter down at Chandler's by DOT is in fact starting on February 11. I did reach out to the project manager through Bancroft and has been since in touch with other representatives. I have been added to the contact list. What is going to be done starting in February is really as a result of their limited ability to be able to work and place things like filings into the ground, into the ocean floor, and so they are going to be working directly off of Barge. I have been told that it's going to have limited to no impact to the boat traffic, to CTC, to not CTC, Casco Bay Lines, and to any of the freight that will be delivered. In March, they will provide us an update whether they will continue working at Chandler's by moving directly to the dock and replacing the filings, or replacing the decking, or if that is going to be something that they will revisit next year. And so as soon as the town has any information, we will advertise it, we will share it. This did kind of come as a surprise, it sounds like the company really changed their scope of work fairly quickly, and so we will let the community know as soon as we're able to have any additional information. Any questions so far?
Okay, is that all right? Just, is there any place we can look to see what they know? Just out of curiosity.
We can, we can get some information and provide that on the town website. There, I mean, really the basic of the work is they're going to be replacing a lot of the decking, and they're replacing a lot of several filings. That's pretty much the general summary of what's going to take place, and it's going to happen in, you know, in a couple of different timeframes, so.
Questions from the board? Any other questions from the public on that part of the TA report? Anything else you got?
Yeah, I have all kinds of other stuff. So Broadband and Axiom, I've been in contact with Mark LeD relative to Axiom, and we're working on a plan as to how and when Axiom will start sending payments to the town. So part of the agreement with Axiom was that when Axiom started receiving payments for the service, then they will be making payments to Chauvique to cover the cost of the bond that the town took on for the project. That has since happened. There are some questions that have been raised by Mark relative to the town bond bank and how much they should or should have taken out, and so we've been back and forth trying to figure that out. I do plan to coordinate a meeting with the Broadband Committee with Mark and myself in mid-March to get some of those questions answered, but regardless, we should be receiving a payment soon, and I plan to come up with a schedule that's going to be expected to follow. Right now, in the agreement, it just says quarterly payment, there is really no defined information as far as when those payments are going to be, what those payments look like, and so through this process, I want to come up with more of an understanding of what those quarterly payments are around the town fiscal year, when the town should expect it, and better plan to receive that revenue, so then that way it's not coming as a surprise to one party or the other. The next thing is a dredging update. I received a phone call from Jordan Macy, who's the project manager. He's relatively new in the discussion when it comes to the overall dredging discussion that the town has had for several years. He provided me with a brief update. The work on Chauvique is 100% complete as far as the dredging work. However, Army Corps is in some pending litigations with the first dredging company who submitted nearly a million-dollar claim for loss of funds due to not being able to complete their project. They ended up leaving the site without letting Army Corps know, then the town had to go into another contract and pay mobilizing fees again, so it ended up adding a cost to the town, but a far more significant cost to Army Corps, so they're in quite the battle with that particular contractor. And so, to date, so in the fact that there is a little brief update from them, really kind of breaking down as far as what the estimated costs are, what the overall costs have been, so to date, the town has contributed a little under $400,000 towards the project, and the total cost of the project has been a little over 2.5 million. So it kind of gives you a number as far as what the Army Corps is contributing and why it's important for them not to have to contribute, you know, nearly a quarter of a million dollars more. So the mitigation is one of the things. The other thing is the eelgrass, or mitigation, eelgrass mitigation is the second component outside to the litigation. They have made several attempts to plant eelgrass in other locations, they have been unsuccessful, and so at this point, what Army Corps is attempting to do is to receive credit for the cost and the efforts that have been put in, and hope that that is recognized. They're pretty certain that that will be recognized just because of the cost that has already gone into it. They have not received a final confirmation. At this point, there wasn't really a clear answer, nor do they feel like there's going to be an added expense for that part. The bigger part is really the litigation that they have with the first company that was hired. So this particular case has now gone to the Department of Justice. Army Corps has also put a counterclaim, and so in my notes is the court information, so for anyone that's interested and enjoys that kind of reading, you're welcome to look it up, and it'll give you all of the details as to what is really happening between Army Corps and that particular company. As things stand right now, if the town does not have to pay any more money, which is really the goal of Army Corps, if the town has to pay more money, they're paying 80% more basically than what we would be paying. But as things stand, if we remain with how things are and things get closed off, the remaining balance for the town will be $113,000 and change. The town has a little over, I think, $130, $133,454 in their reserve account, so that money would cover it, and then there would be a little bit hopefully to allocate elsewhere. The really hiccup in all this is, when asked how long this could take, the response was, this could take years. It is according to the representative, according to Jordan Macy, he said that this is very unusual circumstance that he's experienced, and Army Corps doesn't usually go into such extensive and year-long issues with companies. The company that did the initial work out here has now built a reputation where they tend to submit these kind of claims, so they have several claims that they have other locations in the Boston area, but they're hoping that this is something that could be resolved fairly soon and not go on for a couple of years. And until we have a better answer, hopefully in the springtime, but until then, the money in the dredging account, I would recommend to just keep there in the case that all of a sudden something happens and the case is closed and we're asked to pay, the money's already there versus going to special town meeting to allocate more. I know that was mouthful, but any questions?
Any questions from the public on that topic? Okay, move on.
And then on to the next fairly lengthy and confusing process, and that's FEMA update. I met with our, we had one representative for a little over a year that we really struggled with. Through his departure, we have another one who has been really great to work with. I had reached out to her in the last couple of weeks and asked to just kind of connect and make sure that the steps that the town is taking relative to a lot of the projects that we have submitted to FEMA are the proper steps, so then when it comes to reimbursement or the money that is allocated, that we are doing all the proper steps to ensure that we receive all those funds. As it stands right now, there is a little over a million, almost a million and a half that the town, as long as the government doesn't freeze and/or eliminate the federal funds, the town has already been obligated to, close to $1.6 million that FEMA will provide to the town for damages that took place in the January, January 2024 storms. And so there are several of these projects that have reached that completion point where they've received enough information from the town, they've done their site visits, they've determined the pre-disaster condition costs and mitigation costs. At this point, I did reach out to MIMA, which is the state of Maine agency that FEMA will distribute the money to, that then will distribute to us. No words have gone out to anybody for this particular disaster. They do see in their notes that we are expected to receive this money, and so really at this point is the hope that there are no additional freezes from the president, and that this money will continue to funnel through, because this will have a direct impact on the type of work and how much work the town will be able to do in the near future to South Shore Drive, to East Shore Drive, to Stonework, and to a number of other locations, such as a lot of the right-of-way to shore, so down to Willow Street, down by Hamilton Beach, that right-of-way, there's a lot of them were pumped into one project. So hopefully, hopefully that will kind of come through. And so in my TA report, what I did is just kind of a breakdown of, as things stand, what FEMA has obligated to the town. So for South Shore Drive, pre-storm conditions, the town is expected to receive $486,000, so that's $486,000 the town will be able to use towards improvements at South Shore Drive, and then an additional $462,000 that the town will be able to use towards improvements to make it better to pre-storm conditions. Similar to East Shore Drive, $100,000 for pre-storm, $59,000 for mitigation. So these are big chunks of funds that hopefully will come through, otherwise the conversation, I think, is going to be significantly different about what and how improvements in those locations could look like.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, comments from the board?
So what is the $152,000 for the Stonework for?
So, when, it's kind of a surprise.
Right, because I thought we were going to kind of do it.
Yeah, so initially what they were only going to obligate were the sections that the town basically slightly Band-Aid improved last summer due to a lot of the erosion. Then with the new representative, when we had somebody else come out, I showed them the full paved area of the stone here and said that we had submitted a quote for nearly $200,000 to have that whole area be repaved as a result of the damage, and so with their calculations, that put us in a position of being able to get $152,000. So this would be an example of, for pre-storm conditions, if the town were to repave the area, you know, obviously with all of the discussions that are relative to the Stonework and things like that, it could still very well be a couple of years before raising it is a discussion, but this money could be allocated in the Stonework area to improve paving in, you know, in areas where it's within the realm of the Stonework, so.
And you had some language in there about the ability to extend the project if it's not finished, so was the possibility that we could extend the extension?
Yeah, so as of now, one of the questions that was raised by an engineering firm that we're working with for South Shore Drive was there's this March deadline that they keep hearing about, and so Chauvique is not in any concern for any March projects. For March projects, it was really a lot of like kind of more or less emergency repair and some immediate work. September 2025 is when the expected deadline to complete this project is. However, the town is able to submit a deadline by simply emailing MIMA and letting them know. So in July, we can email them and say, they're not complete, we would get another extension. After that extension, if it's still not complete, we would just have to let FEMA know, and they would need to approve. With such severity of the storms, and especially how many other storms they're dealing with, it's not unexpected that there would be projects, especially for such a small municipality who doesn't have an unlimited resource of funds to just dump into fixing all these issues.
Other questions from the board? Yes? Aliza?
If, thank you. If the work is not completed and we were to have other storms similar to the January 2024 storms that caused damage, does that put any of this at risk?
No, because what they did when they came out is they took really detailed measures and documentation in addition to what we sent them, so they have their own measurements of what the damage was, what the anticipated work is, and so any new storms that could impact or provide additional damage, if, you know, if it meets the damage threshold for the state, then we go through the same process. Hopefully, we won't, because I think this is enough of a plague for the town to handle at this point with storm damages.
And the second question, do we have a scope of work that needs to be done? Is that defined?
So when it comes to mitigation, they provided a summary, summary, so to speak, as far as in their purview what they see mitigation would be like, and so in order for us to ensure, like for South Shore Drive, that we receive that $462,000, the engineering firm that we worked with, we worked with, would want to kind of be within that scope of work. It's not anything dramatic or anything, anything that they wouldn't be familiar with, but... But they want to try to stay within those boundaries so then we receive those funds. If they look at that and say, no, we're not doing any of this, then that mitigation is a loss of funds for us. So it is in our best interest to try to. And from what FEMA says, firms like this are very, very aware of the process. And so with us, the work that we're doing with South Shore Drive, I had sent initially all the information to them, but now that we're really starting the conversations, they will have a copy of all of that work so then, or all of the documentation. So then as they're presenting us with any kind of proposals or any feasibility study about what the options are, that those pieces of information are incorporated within it.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Any questions or comments from the public on those last two topics? All right, moving along, regular, is that all?
I just have one more thing. So this is more or less relative to the budget process. So just as a reminder, the select board does have a meeting on Saturday to talk about the department. And then next Wednesday on the 12th, there is another budget discussion. I will be in Boston having surgery on the 12th, so I will not be here to join you for that meeting. But I will make sure that you guys are all set up and have all of the information. My plan is, which Bob doesn't know this yet, is next Tuesday before I leave to try to finalize the agenda item as much as possible based on the information that we have for the 19th meeting. So then you have everything that you need. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Just remind me what the topic is, the Wednesday, February 12th meeting?
It's the second draft. So this Saturday is departmental discussion, next Wednesday, the 12th, is the second draft. So I'll take any changes from this Saturday, I'll put them in and get them to you on Monday afternoon, and then that will be your discussion, kind of the general overall budget discussion for a second draft.
Good.
And for the sake of the public, the meeting starts at nine o'clock, I believe, on Saturday?
On Saturday, nine o'clock here, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Vika.
You're welcome.
Moving on to regular business, item 25-007. To determine which, if any, of the three options provided by GEI consultants in the feasibility analysis report on Bennetts Cove barge landing dated November 18, 2024, and presented to the public on January 7, 2025, which, if any, of those three does the board want to move forward with? Open it up first to the board. Any comments, questions, suggestions? Richard?
I'll speak up first. So I read over the proposal and I talked to a number of people, most of them are in the room. I think the whole island is very concerned about barging and ferry service and everything. The comings and going to the island is critical to our sustainability here. So we have to have barging. And what we've been dealing with is Bennetts Cove has become the default barging site for a number of years, essentially starting with the transfer station needing to transfer. So Bennetts Cove came up for it. This is my own interpretation of it, you can all refute it, but this is how I understand it. And so over the years, it was somewhat okay, but then over the years, it's become untenable, especially to the neighborhoods down there, as well as to many other residents of the island who like, who enjoy using Bennetts Cove as a nice location. We had the GEI report, it outlined a number of options we can look at, and I thought it did a pretty good job of looking at our other options, but a lot of, especially Bennetts Cove people were, and other people have also brought up, well, what are, they didn't like the fact that the Sunset Landing was not put to rest. And I had the feeling that there's, whether it is or not in our practical sense, when we looked at it, I think members of the community are still not satisfied with the fact that Sunset Landing is not put to rest as an option. So I looked into that myself. I was not part of that decision back years ago when Sunset Landing was on the table. I looked back best I could to the Sunset Landing options. And there are a lot, I just looked at the plan, oh, good site, there's parking, it's a big ramp, that's a big long ramp, that's kind of a problem, there's eelgrass, the ramp goes over the eelgrass. There's challenges, like there would be in everything. It's expensive. Oh, but then the wave and study, studies show that in much of the time, the waves are one to three feet, you can land a barge in that kind of wave activity. Five to seven feet, which is what they predict, much of the time is not landable as a site. And so to counteract, they have in their report saying that we can build this concrete floating buffer thing out there in the water, that'll protect the landing, and it should work. Hopefully, it works, but it's going to need yearly maintenance and probably replace this in 20 years. So I was like, oh, that's a big, that's a big knock on that. I mean, maybe it's doable, but it puts it at risk. And then the expense. So whether Sunset Landing is viable or not, if you were to even start considering it again now, okay, it's five years at best, 10 years probably, and it's expensive. So now we have to go, well, we still need to have barging. And I think the worst problem with Bennetts Cove is that there's just too much traffic there. We have the town traffic, we have the island businesses' traffic there, trying to do their business here on the island, and then we have people coming from away bringing their stuff here and for building and construction. And even if we, let's just pretend we're going to do Sunset Landing in years from now, we still have to have barging at Bennetts for some period of time. What can we do to make this better? What can we do? And I think what we can do is start to restrict Bennetts Cove barging to island businesses and town business activity, because that's where we really need to like get the best bang for our buck in barging. And that would probably reduce barging by 50% if not two-thirds in the summertime. So hopefully, that's favorable. And then meanwhile, I would like to see us put the effort into making the stone pier our secondary barging site. And the way to do it robustly is to, in the stone pier plan, come up with a good two-lane road that can handle the traffic as well as the parking, do what we have to do to repair the landing site so the barge can come in.
Richard, respectfully, I think we need to kind of keep it short.
I'm wrapping it up. Here you go.
Well, my point is that you're beyond the agenda item.
I don't think so. Because I think we need to have an alternative to what we decide to do at Bennetts Cove.
And we can discuss such alternatives when they're on the agenda, but the agenda item is to talk about the three options. So please finish up.
Okay. Anyway, so you heard most of it. And I think it's viable to have barging at Bennetts Cove, and we got, I've got some plans for that, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Richard. Any other? Carol?
So I was just wondering if I could ask which, do you have an opinion of which of these three options?
The second option sounds good. As it's well explained by GEI, it's probably the most, of the three, it's the most robust that is probably permissible. The third one, they express saying it's probably not formidable at all, plus it's the most invasive type of landing. And the first one is not robust enough to really last very long. So number two.
Thanks, Richard.
Yes.
Other comments from the board? David?
I agree that option number two is the best, short term and long term. I also agree that we should be open to other options that could be far in the future beyond the scope of this discussion, but on the table. And I also agree that moving forward, we should bear in mind the fact that we are really kind of hoping that we don't have another storm that makes Bennetts Cove a problematic place than it was last year at this time. And we need to address that. The reason I say that is because it's really, it's really the lifeblood of this island to get the traffic on and off, get the garbage on and off, or off, I guess I should say. And we need it. We can't ignore it, we can't make it go away. But we can make it a better place for landing for both the butters as well as the landing itself.
Okay. Thanks, David. Eliza?
I think we can all agree that in many ways Bennetts Cove is our best, but yet a terrible option because it's so vulnerable. Because of the sensitivity of the zoning, which is, I believe, for a good reason, I think making sure that we make it robust enough to protect it, but not in the eyes of having to be a long-term solution. I think that when we're looking at the solution, I like option number two because I think it helps to preserve the integrity of that site, but it also needs to be our impetus to say, what can we do to improve the comings and goings as well as looking at pursuing other options in the long term?
Thank you, Eliza.
Option two, thank you.
Carol?
So I too favor option two for some of the same reasons people mentioned. I think, just so the public's aware, I don't think option two is a slam dunk. So we may find out on the other end that it's not permissible, but I think it's worth pursuing as a possibility. And I guess just to make clear, my perspective is we need an immediate solution to barging at Bennetts Cove that doesn't preclude alternative solutions down the line. So I think this is, in my mind, the, you know, immediate solution to respond to the need to keep barging, but that doesn't mean we can't explore other alternatives in, you know, any fashion down the line.
And for the record, I agree 100% with what Carol just said. We need a short-term solution, and that does not preclude long-term solutions as well, additional long-term solutions. Does anyone care to make a motion? David?
I move the week continue to develop the GEI consultants' recommendations for option two for Bennetts Cove barge landing.
There's a motion, is there a second? Second by Eliza. Okay, any discussion on the motion by the board? Okay, and any comments from the public? And I'm going to preface by saying, please try to keep your comments focused on the motion and focused on the agenda item, and also please keep them to three minutes and under. And once you've had an opportunity to speak, please let others speak. So any comments? Done.
I think that in order to get permitted for any point, it's my okay, good, because I don't want to hurt my belly. That you really need to be thinking about something that you can rationalize with the DP or somebody else to say, we do have a long-range plan. Whether, can, you know, when, Rich is talking about the wind and wave studies, you know, at Sunset or whatever, anybody who's been around Bennetts Cove any amount of time knows how the wind blows in there. Talk about wind and wave. We've not done a wind and wave study at Bennetts Cove, but if we did, it's going to be more than many, many places. I've spent tons of time down there with Sanford and Mabel over my lifetime. Jackie can attest to it and anybody else who's ever been around Bennetts Cove. We're talking about incredible waves and, you know, you can't even hold the doors open. So I think that's something that people have to think about. But this board, if I were on the DP and this board came and said, yeah, we want to do something and you need a long-term plan. And I don't want to get cut off like Richard did by going on to the options, but we really need to look at someplace like Sunset that will solve all of our problems because the next thing on the agenda is going to be the other half of the story. And we'll hear more about that later. But I really think that this board needs to be thinking about the long range as well as the short range and have something in their pocket when that question comes up.
Thank you, Dan. Other comments? Jonathan?
The only thing I would like to say is that, okay.
On camera.
Great. What do you think? One thing that Bennetts does do is it provides the 50% of the traffic not coming up the Wharf Road. And if you think about it, it's a public road on the west end, it's a public road on the east end. So maybe Teddy Hook and I are going to hire an attorney and shut down the Wharf Road. What makes sense? If we start doing that, if we start having to, you know, adjust what is, has been public for a long time, you run a real danger of being able to have real solutions. Right now, you know, what doesn't come to the barging or Stonework is at Bennetts. That's a good balance, you know? Otherwise, the traffic, I mean, more traffic that's going to come to Stonework. A lot of plant comes to Bennetts Cove because it saves everyone money, you know, as far as barge and barge costs and things like that. It's also roll-on, roll-off, so it doesn't really impact except for the, you know, the weight and the tire tracks. Can we work on logistics of how the barge idles and the dump trucks that idle? Yes, you can absolutely do that. But I think it should be, if it's public, it's public. There's been other industrial activities down there. There was a float, there was a, I mean, a fuel service down there at Bennetts. There's been a lot of stuff in the past that people might not realize. So anyway, just to consider that. The only other thing I'd say is that, yeah, we do need to do something against the barge landing for Stonework and probably widen it. But still, there's this good fact that if you split the amount of use, that's what's good about it.
Thanks, Dan. Other comments? Mark, there, please.
I think, great, I'd like to thank the select board and the town for continuing to look at this barging issue on Chibig. Whether it's short-term at Bennetts Cove or longer-term than we think it's going to be at Bennetts Cove, I would urge the town and the select board to consider the operational issues that are lingering with the barging activity down at Bennetts that have been identified by us and the neighborhood. And think about addressing some of those along with a, even a temporary solution.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Other comments? All right, seeing none. There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Would ask for vote, all in favor of the motion that David made? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you all. Next item, item 25-008, to authorize the town administrator to sign the amendment. Number one, proposal for design and permitting consulting services for Bennetts Cove barge landing dated January 2024, and to expend up to $24,000 from reserve account 9016 barge ramps and $13,000 from account 9195 storm damage and restoration. Open it up for discussion on the board? Or motion, or?
I'll make a motion. Is it January 2024 or 2025?
Thank you. January 25, correct?
Is that correct?
Yeah, thank you.
Just to be, just to be perfect here.
Way to go. Good job.
And I will, I will move that we adopt this item as, as written.
Okay, there's a motion to adopt. Is there a second? Second by Richard. Any discussion from the board? Any discussion from the floor, any comments? I'm sorry, Carol?
So this is maybe a question for Vika, but I think we discussed somewhat informally about the potential to have a stakeholder group, you know, that's facilitated. And I guess I'm wondering what the process would be to, you know, initiate that. And I think there might be an expense associated with it. So is it to get a quote and then come back at another meeting to approve that? Or, I mean, I have to. Or, I mean, I have talked to a few folks who provide those services, but I don't have a cost.
I, yeah, so I think it's a good idea. And I didn't want to assume that this is how the board was going to vote, so I didn't want to make any pre, you know, assumptions. So using the example, and not necessarily the company or the person, but when the, when the town had all of the meetings relative to the Stonewarp a couple of years ago, and Weston and Sampson was the company that was hired, they had a third party that came in and that kind of mediated the process between the engineering company and the stakeholders. And so I think that it would be really valuable for the town and for the stakeholders, primarily, you know, the residents in the area, to have something similar. And it would potentially allow all parties to be heard and have, you know, some suggestions that could potentially be used to benefit the discussion. If that's something that the select board is interested in, the select board does have a good chunk of cash in selectman contingency, and that's where I would recommend those funds to come out of. I think some of these reserve accounts, you know, we are kind of using them quite a bit for a lot of these things. And with an expense like that, I think it would be best for it to come out of selectman contingency and save some of these more specific reserve accounts for something specific towards.
Especially this time of year, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
And I've added that to the future agenda.
I was just going to ask if you have any dollar amount in mind as to what it.
I don't, but that's because I didn't want to jump the gun and assume that the select board was going to go down this. But by any means, I think, I would suspect that maybe even GEI would have some names or recommendations of people they've used. But I think that's, it would be a easy email out to kind of the municipal community to find some resources.
So we can do that here.
And I did talk to a couple of people who do this, and I think a range of 5,000 to 8,000, depending on the number of meetings. And I guess what I see the value is that even, say, we can't do anything down there, but we're going to continue to use it, I still think there, it needs, as Mark said, some kind of management plan. So soliciting input from all the stakeholders about what's essential for them or important to them in terms of, you know, operating down there, to me, is necessary no matter what the outcome of this next step might be. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't know if that's how the rest of the board knows.
So you're not against?
I think the company through Weston and Sampson, if memory serves me right, was in like the $4,000 to $5,000 range. So I think that sounds probably relatively.
Okay. So we'll put that on the next agenda.
Well, I was just going to amend my motion to add as much as $5,000 for a public outreach, if you want to do that.
I guess, I would suggest we wait until we get a proposal.
I agree. Because I would recommend the funds to come from a different avenue than what this motion is. But that's up to you to ultimately.
All right, so there's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, we've had comment from the board. Is there any comment from the public on the motion that's on the floor? All right, seeing none. There's a motion on the floor, all in favor? All right, it's unanimous? Thank you. Okay. The next item, 25-009, to adopt the proposed changes to the parking and traffic ordinance to only allow resident parking on the Stonewarp. Resident parking is defined in the ordinance. So I would open that up to comments, discussion from the board? Carol?
Well, and I guess just to, but to explain, the board did get some feedback from seasonal residents that they felt they would be excluded under the way we defined resident previously. So.
Could you speak up a little, Carol, please?
So what we, we had heard back when this was in the packet.
Last time.
Last time. We had some people speak to us about the fact that they felt it would exclude seasonal residents from using the parking area. So we went and evaluated how other entities define resident parking and tried to use that as a guide. And for example, Long Island does allow seasonal residents to park. They have a different classification there than resident parking. But, I mean, the goal here was to be more inclusive, to basically include anybody who's a summer, I mean, a year-round or seasonal resident, just for an explanation.
Wasn't, yeah, wasn't the original purpose of this idea was to provide the, as someone said earlier, the dying breed of people who live on Chibig and work mainland, they travel to work every day. We still have these essential people, to give them a reasonable parking spot, especially in the summertime when they're just trying to get to work five days a week and they can't find a place to park and just very, that kind of business. So that was what I understood as the original intention of us making it just for, just for year-round residents. So we open it up now, what, to anybody who's taxpayer, which is good, but then we're still going to have, how do we, I would like to still somewhat protect these workers, give them a little extra help to get to their job every day. Yes. But so, and then to add to that mix, aren't we also just talking about that lower section of the stone here? That's where everybody, the parking space is down there, it's not going back up or through.
It's basically from the pole down.
Yeah, so it's not that big of an area. So, so that, but then on top of that, we have, we were pointing out today that there is probably not enough handicap response down there.
Correct.
So maybe two more of those. So the numbers there start shrinking and then we start designing our turnaround, the numbers are shrinking even more.
Right.
So there aren't going to be that many spots there anyway.
Thanks. And Vika, and then Carol.
Yeah, so I just, I kind of to, back in August, this was presented, and that was really the first time where the select board made, took really heavy initiatives from the changes that I've seen in the last couple of years about making changes or experimenting changes towards some form of improvement. And within that discussion, and you will see the cross-out mark in this particular sample, it was recommended to have seven parking spaces that were only specific to commuters and that they would need to provide proof of, you know, what, what makes them a commuter from Chibig to the other side. There were a lot of questions about how would that be decided? How would that be determined? That led to still trying to work to accommodate commuters from Chibig, but also just year-round residents who are trying to get to a boat when primarily the contractors that are leave at 2 o'clock, at the 3 o'clock and the 4 o'clock boat, they are the ones that are taking up the prime spots down there. And so then you have the people who are going on the 6:30, the 7, the 8, and the 10 the next day who don't have spots because those commuters are just getting off. And so that's really what this is trying to not fix, but find a way to accommodate. And so last time when it was brought, that it was very specific that it was year-round residents, there was a complaint from seasonal. When this got put in, they received a complaint from a year-round resident saying, you need to have a section limit and just accept the fact that year-round residents inevitably should have some form of an exception. And it is expected and it's okay. And it's just this playing game of how to be fair for everybody. Ultimately, I think this recommendation and however form the board chooses to adopt it, keep in mind, could be changed at the next board meeting. And the goal of this is really just to try something to see how and what improvements could be made because ultimately the wharf is not getting bigger, parking aren't increasing, and it's not being raised tomorrow. And so these are the steps that are continuously going to have to keep happening to adapt, to change, and to experiment to see how and what improvements could be made. I think long-term solution is off-site parking. We don't have that location right now. And so I just, I really want people to understand that this could be changed at the next board meeting by this board or by any board moving forward, but it's these little changes and with the input that we've received from residents that we're kind of adapting and adopting these to try to come up with something that's going to make everyone happy.
Thank you.
For help the situation somewhat.
Carol, you have something?
Well, and I guess, no, Vika just covered. So first, we were trying to respond to a seasonal residence concern, and then recently after we proposed this alternative, which I think where we encompass seasonal residents is taxpayer Chibig dialing. So then we received today some input from a year-round resident who felt that, you know, it really, I got, what I read into that was that it should be limited to year-round residents. And so it's a challenge because we're not even guaranteeing anybody a parking space. We're just limiting, restricting the parking. I think the demand, as somebody mentioned, is going to be larger than the space. So not everybody's guaranteed a spot. I do think we were doing this on a trial basis through the spring, so it's not like it's, you know, it's not like we can't change it. So I think we wanted to try it, and I think the primary objective was to move some of the overnight parked, you know, the vehicles that are parked overnight that primarily belong to contractors because they leave a little bit earlier and move those back up the wharf so that residents have closer access. So that was, I think, the objective. So I think it's up to the board to decide whether we want to accommodate just year-round residents or just seasonal residents.
I have a suggestion. What if you split it up a little bit and you, the Fisherman No Parking Zone, just those few spaces, you provide those for year-round registered voters. The rest of the Stonewarf is for, for this. And then you kind of, you, you give a little bit of both. Obviously, it's not going to fill, it's not going to provide everything, and it's first come, first served, but it still gives you something to maybe make everyone happy a little bit, with the exception of the contractors who are inevitably going to be the next round of complaints that we're going to receive from emails, and that's just the reality.
Thanks, Vika. Eliza, did you have your hand up?
I did, thank you. I really like this compromise as a way to try it out with having it be for seasonal and year-round residents. I think that that will move, when I'm down at the stone here and I look at commercial vehicles that are there, moving them off will open up several spots every day. I also like the idea that larger vehicles will be off the Stonewarf for parking. So, well, Vika, I think that's a nice compromise to look at. I think it complicates things. We don't have that many non-resident people who will have stickers. I think if we go with this right here and see how it goes until spring, it's a good move, and I hope it's helpful to people to get those commercial vehicles off the Stonewarf and see how that opens things up. In the summer, it's just going to be a problem that we all have to live with for those months. But I like this solution.
I'd like to make a comment. I divided into two areas of concern. I think the first is we clearly need to add some ADA spaces, some handicap parking spaces. There have been days as of late when there are more people trying to park in the handicap spots than there are handicap spots. And I think that's something we owe to the community. Beyond that, and on a totally separate focus, I try to think of what we're trying to accomplish as a town. And I think one of the key goals we have these days is to support the year-round community, to grow the year-round community. My personal preference would be young families with kids in the school, so we protect the school. And one of the letters that we got via email was from a young family talking about how hard it is when you're trying to get your kids back and forth to programs on the mainland and you get down there and there's no place to park. So if I was going to make a motion, I would propose that we make the Stone Pier year-round only. And I have a lot of friends who are summer people who would probably not be happy with me for saying that, but I think strategically, that's what we need to do in addition to adding at least two spaces to ADA. That's my comment, but I'm not going to make a motion, I'll wait for somebody else to do that.
I'll go ahead and make that motion to restrict the Stonewarf to, how are we going to define it as resident parking?
I think to do that, we would have to resort to stickers. I think for the experiment, bow to Vika on this, but maybe we can do it just by our parking attendants' knowledge of cars for the experiment. You know, stickers.
You would have to modify what's.
So, yeah, so if, I just want to make sure you understand because I, I have no interest, with all due respect to David, to try to follow his motion because I have a feeling that might be a long one. Are, what are you, right now, what you're proposing is, parallel back to what was in front of you a couple of weeks ago where it's a, a year-round resident is, before it was defined as a year-round resident, you have to be a registered voter on Chibig, and that's how you provide your proof of residency. And then we order stickers and they come to the town, they prove residency by make, by confirming that they're a registered voter, get a sticker, and that, that's how they park. That's what was presented a couple of weeks ago. Is, but that's different from what was here. And so I just want to make sure that with whatever motion you make in what you're amending that it jives with whatever you're trying to do.
Your memo of January 31st has the red line.
The red line, yes.
That's, that's really what I'm proposing.
Okay, so what you're proposing is not what Bob just said.
Okay, that's, okay.
Because tax, a taxpayer Chibig could be a seasonal resident.
The proposal as it stands is you could be, so the combination of how to determine resident would be if you're a registered voter, or if you're a taxpayer, or if you have a main driver's license, because there are people that live here that don't own property, or vehicle registration, which I did raise this concern last time, there is no requirement for who can register a vehicle on Chibig. So if you're trying to prevent from commercial vehicles not parking in that area, I can almost guarantee you that you're going to have a handful of them who are going to come to us, who are going to register those commercial vehicles for the properties that they're working on. And there's nothing against the law, but then we're obligated to provide that to them. So whatever you're trying to work out here, just kind of keep in mind the goal that you're trying to accomplish and what, what the, you know, what those qualifications that you're trying to follow with it.
Well, I think I'll leave it to somebody else to make this motion, but I would add, but I would, I would like to add the addition of two handicap parking spaces. And somebody else can continue the motion. Do we, I had something, do we?
Make a motion. You do it.
Oh, well, go ahead and let us read it. No, it's different. Oh, it's different from this.
So the motion would have to change.
Yeah, the motion is going to be like this, only different. I don't want to try.
I would, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we restrict parking on the Stone Pier to year-round residents only, as demonstrated by a sticker that is only available to people who are registered to vote on Chibig, and that we add two ADA spaces to the parking along the north side of the Stone Pier.
I'll second that.
Can you please repeat that motion?
I'll try. I'll make a motion that we restrict parking on the Stone Pier, as defined as below the pole, to year-round residents only, as determined by the sticker which will be issued to registered voters only, and that we add two ADA parking spots. I think David seconded that?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a motion on the floor and it's been seconded, or is there discussion from the board? Carol?
So one of the things that came up, and Vika and I looked at that recently, is if you are a renter on the. you are a renter on the island, you might not be a registered voter. So are we precluding anybody who's renting and not a registered voter? Is that the intent? Because that's where, for resident, you know, that's where this part B came from, was to cover that kind of situation.
If you live on the island year-round, whether you rent or buy, you can vote on that. You don't have to be a property.
The issue that we ran into was people that lived here that weren't taxpayers.
Right.
Right.
You're right.
Yeah. So a lot of people that live here year-round are registered voters.
So you're saying though, that everybody would have to be a registered voter?
Yeah. For this experimental period and then we decide from there. But I think it's a strategic investment in trying to help support and boost the year-round community. And I'm not thinking of myself, I'm thinking of young people with kids primarily and also the ADA situation.
Yeah, how about the old people like me?
And the old people like Carol. That's right up there.
Yeah.
Any other discussion from the board on the motion on the floor?
Do we want to make any comment in here and of having it be, let's, it's to see how it goes or make the comment that this?
I don't think we need to leave that in the motion. I think we've covered that by way of discussion. We can make, we can add an agenda item in three months or one month.
Okay.
If we see the need to do so.
Sounds good.
Other discussion from the board?
Sorry, this needs to be clarified for me. So we are not including tax-paying, non-year-round resident people in this motion?
Correct, we are not. It's only voters, which is a resident.
Okay.
Donna and then Paul.
Well, again, I'd like to say that this has been going on for 55 years and we have not solved the problem and it will never be solved there. I went to town on, a couple of days ago, and I took you to the new boat and the cars were almost up to Houghton's. And I think that might be the day that Jackie had to walk all the way down the road and she has mobility issues. I think she was willing to let me say that. So while I've been listening to the discussion, this, we do not want to alienate the people who pay probably 80% of the taxes in this community. And that's one thing. My solution, if I was sitting where you are, is to say, okay, we're going to have limited parking for whatever Vika had for the beginning, you know, all those different criteria, including the seasonal property owners, and on the wharf and those two dirt spaces. That's the only way we're going to get the contractors out of there, is if that's what your goal is. You also have contractors here who own property here, even though they don't have houses and they don't live here, just to let you know about that. So those people will still be parking there. But if you include those, it gives you more opportunity to add even more than two of the adaptable spaces. And that's the main idea anyway. Because if Jackie could have parked in one of those dirt spaces, that would have been a lot easier for her than going all the way up the road. So leaving those dirt spaces available to, whether it's contractors, whether, whatever you're trying to do, I don't think you're going to get very far because we're really only talking about a handful of spaces on the wharf. So let's look at how do we solve the problem with the most people? How do we alienate the least of other people? And right now, there are seasonal people here anyway. So why would we put that in it right now when it's not a problem and we try it our way? You know, I mean, you know, it's the people here in this room who are going to be parking. And so that would be my solution. And I would, if I were sitting there, I would either amend the motion, withdraw the motion, and try and expand the space that you're talking about if you, if that's what your goal is.
Thank you, Donna. Paul?
Any town in town has a limited resource. In this case, it's parking that we're talking about tonight. It's reasonable for that to be allocated inside to the residents. Thank you for drawing a line, a hard line where I think it needs to be drawn. In this case, to eliminate, okay, categories that are nebulous like the registered vehicle avenue and the hard one, that's taxpayer. We all know you can only be a resident one place. You can own land, you can be a taxpayer, a seasonal resident in many locations, but you have one place you call home. My wife was also trying to make the boat the other day. She doesn't have mobility problems, but she rarely has any extra time. So she also parked up near South Road, okay, and made it down. I think it's ridiculous that people who live on this island, all right, are struggling the finest basis, the stone pier, in the middle of the day, in the middle of the winter. So I'd like to see this move forward. With all the talk about commercial vehicles, I also reread the ordinance, the existing ordinance for parking. And I just wonder why we're even discussing all the vehicles in the so-called dirt spaces? Because it says right in here that all commercial vehicles shall park in the parallel spaces along the walk road. They're not supposed to be down there anyways. If we had enforced a sign that said, follow the existing ordinance, we would have a lot of spaces free already. So I'd like to see the existing parking ordinance enforced. Finally, briefly, Richard, I think you've nailed it and Donna, you also commented on it. So when we look at the number of spaces involved from the telephone pole down and follow the direction of this ordinance, perhaps circular parking, et cetera, or the inclusion of more handicap, the seven spaces off to the north only becomes five and there's perhaps five others. So you're talking about 10 spaces as currently defined. I'd love to see the line moved up right to the edge of the dirt on the south side, okay? And just, every area beyond that is residential. Contractors are already supposed to be out of there, all right? We're not allowing them in the dirt spaces to begin with. So I encourage you, in light of the limited real estate scenario, we're not making any more of it. Move the line on up, okay? Include more spaces in this motion. Thank you.
Paul, to be clear, were you suggesting moving the line up, you said on the south side?
Yeah. If you look at the two areas. So if you move the line up to the red line, so it's at the south side, you split this one in half, that's about 10 and 10, and 10 that are outside.
Okay. So what Paul's suggesting is both sides of the dirt, but up to the extent of the dirt on the south side of the road. And then, in effect, bisetting, bisecting the dirt parking on the north side of the road in a roughly 50/50 fashion, 40/60 fashion.
It counts out as about 10, 10 and 10.
Thanks, Paul. Thank you for the comment. Other comments? Donna?
I just wanted to say, I agree with what Paul's saying, but also, long run, you don't have enough spaces down there. The most destructive part of the stone wharf is the part, the cars parked on it. And in order to get circular flow, if you move CTC back, I would strongly suggest, especially if, I was going to point out like the CTC, there's got to be a way of doing remote parking with a shuttle service, especially for handicap people. It works on the mainland. You're going to need to do it at some point because the tipping point for the number of people and the number of houses on the island where you're just going to have to go to that. Instead of trying to work out parking on a limited, on the stone wharf, you're going to have to go to it. And at some point, I mean, the cost of it, I mean, I think you ought to look at it now, like what is it called? Like you already have a school bus. Why can't we use a school bus in a variety of other ways? Can we get into a shuttle service in the summertime to knock down the congestion on the island in general? Can we encourage more bike parking and moped parking down there in a controlled manner so it's not disarrayed? Just saying, the more cars you put on the wharf, on the stone wharf, more you're paying for stone wharf repairs. So I would put all commercial traffic on, suggesting on the north road with a shuttle service.
Thanks.
That's the best way to clear it all out.
Yeah.
Just saying.
Thanks.
That's your time.
Other comments? Mark?
I'll be brief. Thank you for taking this up. I know parking is a very hard issue, especially down to the stone wharf. I would urge you to take another look at the June and November areas that have historically been blocked off for the fishing community every year. I think the use of those areas has declined. I think it's declined enough that it probably doesn't warrant at least the whole area being blocked off every year for that purpose, which takes away more parking spaces. And touching on enforcement, which I know is a difficult thing when you talk about ordinances, it's always difficult to actually not only enforce them, find someone who will do the position of enforcement. And I think parking enforcement, in my opinion, is going to possibly expand in this town moving forward with stone wharf, Channel's Cove, probably the area at the top of the Indian Island Hook area, Jenks Road and others. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Other comments? Beth?
First, I want to thank you because I do think we're moving forward. I'm going to stay positive in this and I really appreciate it. But I have to agree with, with Mark and the most important thing here is, and I don't know what we're going to talk about, but is enforcing this. You can have our sheriff there on one boat and then the other because I had people come up to me last summer and somehow this became me who's doing this, me and you. And I'm thinking, okay, I'll take responsibility of a little bit because I think it's the most important thing to do. But they had no idea how to do it and they would appreciate someone telling them what to do. It's the same thing, and I keep saying about the pizza, but when we did that, people thanked us because all we want to know is what they're supposed to do. And I think that's where you're going to have to put some money. We've got to hire somebody. You can have somebody up at the, at the top of Walk Road when it's cold down there saying, I'm sorry, but don't bother to go down, it's parked right there. I mean, we've got to be efficient about it and we're going to have to spend some money. But I thank you for trying to work through this. I think it can be done.
Thank you, Beth. Other comments from the public? An eager, an eager comment.
I'll be quick. I support the fourth motion. I think it's a good idea. I, I'm not aware, I was a former summer resident and I, I could live with that, that would be fine. And maybe I say that because I'm not a summer resident anymore, but I think it's a good idea. The one thing Paul suggests, consider, you're already considering is on that, is be super generous on the handicap spaces. I, like, I think you should have more than you need. You need to scope it for the peak number that you might have. I know that's a tough one because it don't count and all that. That would be my question.
Thank you, Erin. And Chip, are you coming up for a comment?
Yeah, just one more.
Yep.
I agree with what you said and I agree with restricting to people who are voters. I think that people will understand that a little bit. That's it. I'm just going to move this mic.
Thank you. Other comments from the floor?
One idea. So one of, one of, obviously the big issue here, the elephant in the room, is regardless of the time of the year, commercial commuters off island are taking up a large amount of parking spaces at the stone wharf.
You're coming to the island.
To the island.
Yes.
Yep, sorry. I think it might be in the best interest for the town to communicate that information via code enforcement officer paperwork when they're filling out these, because one of the things that I've heard is pass this information on to the residents, tell them, well, majority of the people that are coming here to do the work on these houses, the residents aren't here. They're seasonal residents who aren't here. Hence why these people are driving to and from the boat. But if maybe we can put a note on the actual application somehow through the code enforcement officer that, you know, commercial parking only parallel or something like that, that might be. Because one of the feedbacks that I've received from enforcement is there are people that take advantage of it. There are also people that will go down there knowing when the enforcement is happening and kind of use it around the timeframe that the enforcement is happening and park outside of that. But how do you distinguish who's a commercial and who's not? Because, because, you know, sand and gravel might be using their vehicle, driving down as a year-round resident, parking a car to go to town. And that's kind of, those are some of those tricky avenues that I think when it comes to enforcing that I have to be worked over. But maybe for the commercial people who are, who are causing an issue, siphoning some of that communication through the code enforcement officer documentation, when they're filling out applications, letting them know that they can only parallel park could be a way to reach them.
Yeah.
Other than going down there and telling them individually what just happened to people.
Yeah. I'm going to refrain from, are there more comments from the public? Okay. I'm going to refrain from amending my motion primarily because I think, two things. One, to Paul's point, contractors are already supposed to be up in the parallel spots. And two, by making below the pole year-round only, we are by default making above the pole in the two dirt areas available to both year-round and season. So I think we're talking about three zones and I think our challenge is both the stickers for those who are voters and then the enforcement of the contractors. To answer the situation that Vika described, a contractor who has their truck and they're taking their kids over to town is going to have a voting sticker on their car because they're theoretically, they're a voter on the island. So I'm not going to amend the motion, but it looks like there's more discussion from the board after all the public discussion. So Carol and then Richard.
Well, when we first looked at this, the issue with commercials, are you talking a commercial registration for their vehicle, which is not the same as a contractor? And some are registered commercially and some are not.
Yeah.
And so I think that's why we, so even in terms of how our ordinance is written, that's kind of a hard, I mean, I think I know what the intent was, but the way it's written, it might be hard to enforce.
Yes.
So I, to me, I, and I guess one question I have is we've heard a lot of different proposals tonight, some reverting back to our original proposal. And I think that the language, I mean, it's just a procedural question for Vika, but I think we should, if we're going to do something different than the language in here, shouldn't we be amending this language?
Which language are you?
The language that's in the ordinance right now.
I think that's what we're doing by way of the motion.
Well, I think we need to specifically.
So you're suggesting we need to bring the motion, bring the ordinance back for approval?
No, I'm just saying that the motion should include, for example, deleting the reference to taxpayer on Chavig.
Do you need that?
In the current motion?
Yeah.
Well, you have sticker registered voter, so it does not cover the.
Okay. So you're going to replace what's in here now in red with something else?
With what's in the motion?
Right. So the red that's proposed is going to be, this will all replace it.
Okay.
And for the purpose, a resident is going to be considered somebody who's a year-round resident who is a registered voter on Chavig.
Okay.
That's how the motion was stated.
Which is back to what we.
Which is exactly back to what you guys discussed a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
And I apologize, I wasn't here, but we, sorry we said all this name, but I was in. So other, I think, Richard, you have anything?
Just to drive, so I know we've had trouble with signs before, but it seemed to me the best way to enforce and communicate, nothing like good communication with good signage, is to really demarcate it with the signs. It seems like the no parking June and November works pretty well. In fact, it works very well. Those, we need signs that say, you know, just delineate where to go.
Yeah. We can, we can deal with that administratively. I think that's a good idea. Yeah.
I'm not going to go and order a bunch of metal signs because that would be a waste of money, but laminated signs that we can put on the post saying, registered voter, parking beyond this point.
And I would also propose that we can work with our town administrator and work with the person who's doing parking enforcement at this. the person who's doing parking enforcement at this time, and have them err on the side of issuing tickets to things that collect contractor trucks. And if it's not a contractor truck, they can simply come into the town office and demonstrate that it's not a contractor truck, and I believe the TA is the one who's authorized to rip that ticket up or void that ticket or whatever. So other questions or comments before we vote? Okay, does a motion on the floor? Do we need to read it back, or does everybody have a good understanding?
Could you just read it back?
Could you read it back, please, Chris?
Yeah. Motion is to restrict parking on Stone Pier below the pole to year-round residents only as, year-round residents only as determined by the sticker, which will be for registered voters only, and that we will add to the handicap parking spots.
Okay. Two spots.
Yeah, two spots.
Motion on the floor, it's been seconded, there's been a lot of discussion. Time for a vote, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for the comments and the thoughtfulness. And to Donna's point, it's only been 75 years that we've been talking about this. Fifty-five, sorry, 55 years. We'll keep trying to get better with it and deal with the realities of a limited resource with a growing town. All right, moving on to item number 25-010, to authorize the town administrator to sign the system agreement between the Town of Chabig Island and Radio Communication Management Incorporated, and to expend up to $31,000 from the reserve account, 3025 Fire Department. You want me to talk about this, or you want to talk about it, or?
I'll just do a brief summary on this. So a couple of years ago, the Select Board authorized from Fire Department recommendation to set money aside for two different things. It was about $20-plus thousand for a radio upgrade and then $7,500 and change for new radios for the fire department. Fast forward to a couple of years, that project is finally in clearing and stages. And so this particular contract, what it is, is the contract for that initial radio upgrade. The only difference from what was brought to the town's attention as a recommendation that went to town meeting and money was appropriated for to now, it is about $8,000 difference increase, which, you know, it's, we're looking at almost three budget cycles from when this was brought to your attention to now. And what this is, is just to authorize me to sign and expend the money, so then the fire department can proceed with the radio upgrade that's going to benefit Chabig, Yarmouth, Cumberland, and Long Island.
Thanks, Vika. I would add, this is the completion, if you will, of all the work that the Facilities Committee did to upgrade the electrical system within the Public Safety and Town Office building. And also to extend that power out to a new shed. All of that work was 80/80, was 40/40/20, Cumberland, Yarmouth, Chabig, in terms of the ratio of cost allocation. And this is Chabig's portion on a 40/40/20 basis of the radio upgrades that allow Chabig's system to work better, but also allow Cumberland's and Yarmouth's systems to work better. So a project getting close to the end. Carol?
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the system agreement between the Town of Chabig Island and the Radio Communication Management, Inc., and to expend up to $31,000 from the reserve account, 3025 Fire Department.
Motion on the floor, is there a second? Second by Eliza. Any discussion on the board? Carol?
I just want to thank Vika for being on the ball, for noticing the error in the contract and Chabig's, and what was potentially going to be.
$90,000.
$90,000 for Chabig's share. So I appreciate that you're paying attention. And I appreciate that you, you know, I think politely explained that to some individuals who are concerned. So anyway, I appreciate that you were paying attention on that, and $30,000 sounds much better than $90,000.
I agree.
Other, other comments from the board? Okay, so any comments from David?
I just had one. Did you mention that Long Island is a part of this?
Yes.
Yeah, but they're not.
Well.
Well, so the benefit from this being finalized is there are some agreements between Chabig and Long and Yarmouth and Cumberland. It's a whole Long thing, but this is, this is only town of Chabig.
Yeah, thank you.
It's like a four-year process to get to this.
Other comments from the floor? All right, seeing none, motion on the floor, it's been seconded, all in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you, folks. And moving on to item 25-011, to take any necessary action on design proposal criteria for 30% design for the Stonewall. So there's been correspondence going back and forth, trying to update, hone in, and finalize the proposal for 30% design work with GEI. I don't think we have a proposal from them yet, but we have criteria that the board has seen that we're ready to formalize and hand off to them so that they can design their proposal. Is that correct, Carol?
Yeah. And I'd say the major changes from the board since we first sent this out was, and Richard, maybe you can explain your, you asked that we add that the design could accommodate expanded barging at the Stone Pier.
Yeah. I just think that's, while we're redesigning this, rebuilding the Stonewall for the next generation or so, is that we do address barging, and I see one of the relief valves for our barging needs could be to allow the Stone Pier, to accommodate the Stone Pier, which would require, you know, a good road leading away from the Stone Pier, two-lane road, would require whatever repairs that ramp needs. This is talking for short term, not the big plan. And then also to coordinate barging with whoever we can get to do the barging, to time their barging comings and goings with our CTC ferry, because it cannot be seen landing bargings at the time of the CTC ferry.
So are there any physical?
I have a plan, and I will bring that up later.
Richard, are there any physical changes to the conceptual design required for what you're talking about?
The reason why I mentioned it was just to make sure that it is considered in their overall, which is essentially the road.
So the road is included, and the ramp improvement, replacement of the sticks is already underway?
Okay.
Okay. Carol?
I guess I would see this as a departure from the conceptual design, where we didn't necessarily envision expanded barging operations at the Stone Pier. So I don't know if that means a bigger ramp, you know, wider or longer. So I guess, I think I just wanted to try to get a handle on what you, I personally have a little bit of concern of expanding barging traffic at the Stone Pier, given the amount of congestion we already have. But I think it's, it's not, you know, you're saying to have it be considered, and I guess that's, you know, that's open to discussion as we go forward. So I don't have a problem including it, I just do have concerns about increasing congestion.
All right, other comments? David?
I have a question. On the second page, under traffic flow, it says, "In addition to traffic flow patterns from public safety and parking, traffic flow should reduce congestion and confusion. Cueing for barge and boat ramp should be addressed. Consider the impact of changing the access point to the CTC float to a point southeast along the wharf, so the ferry traffic doesn't have access to the narrow finger of the wharf." I did not understand that.
So I, I can, I think the, it's been discussed in a couple of these conceptual designs to move, particularly if we add, you know, longer ADA compliant ramps, that ultimately the access point off the ferry might actually be down off the finger portion of the pier and closer to where, say, the trap area is, in other words. And that gives us more access to, say, a circular traffic flow. So right now, we back up onto the finger pier to get people on and off the ramp, and the ramp would actually move south towards the gunk hole there, given along the ramp. And I think that's in several of the designs.
The landing at the top of the ramp would move, in effect, to accommodate the 80-foot versus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Carol?
And so we have a blank here under fiscal capacity, and we did talk with the engineer again today, and this is sort of maybe a joint effort between the capitals, I mean, the, whatever you guys are, the Finance Committee and the town. And I guess it was recommended to me that we, at least the town, try to set some parameters around what we think, you know, we can, you know, support for construction costs. And I think that has to be looked at in the context of all our potential capital costs. So I think the engineer gave us in the one to millions, as opposed to 10 to millions, which was some guidance, but I, I think we should maybe, working with the Finance Committee, try to nail that down a little bit more, you know, in a, in a range that we can, you know. My concern is that we don't get out the other end and end up with a design that we then turn around and say, well, we can't afford to do that, which happens a lot, it's not uncommon. So I, and that's really coming from Chris Mayo at DOT and some of the other folks. So I think, you know, it's not something we need today to get them started, but I think as this project progresses, it would be a good idea to try to develop a range of costs that we could accommodate for that project. And it has to be done in consideration of the other projects and how much debt service we can bear.
Other comments? Eliza?
So do we have a timeline for when we could get those numbers from the Finance Committee? Please.
I don't think we have, we'll let the Finance Committee speak.
Okay.
The Finance Committee has met three times.
Oh, thank you.
We have three meetings scheduled in February. I don't know. We're just beginning to look at the large projects and pull together a snapshot of those projects. And, you know, I think we can come up with a number that would say the town's capacity is however many million for new capital projects.
Okay.
And here's the list of.
The capital projects.
Four, five, or six big new projects in the March-August timeframe.
That's good.
Thank you, John. Thank you. Thank you for the work you guys are doing. Any other comments, questions from the board, or any motions from the board relative to this proposal, this proposal guidance, I guess we could call it? What would you call it, Carol? Yes?
Yeah, it is guidance, and I guess the goal would be if the board approves of these criteria, that we adopt them and send them on to the engineer officially. And the board has done this in the past on other projects like this. And that also is if we all disappear in a few years, it's still in here, what, what the design criteria is. So I think it's helpful as people come and go. And also for Vika, she can refer back to it. The engineer did ask for this when we met with him.
Yep. So is there a motion? Do we need a motion for this, or is it more of a consensus item?
So my recommendation would be that you do make a motion, just so that way there is the concrete, this is what this board adopted. In a couple of months, I mean, there might be a whole new board of five members, and so this really gives it that guideline of this is what the process is, and this is, you know, what, what should be followed through, rather than, you know, new people coming in and starting from scratch.
Carol?
And I'll make a motion that the board adopt the guidelines for the Stonewall 30 master, master plan 30% design guidance dated February 5th, 2025.
Okay, second? Second by David? Discussion from the board? Seeing none, discussion from the public? Donna? John?
So I guess I don't really understand what exactly, so you have a list of design criteria, those are things that you want to accomplish, is that what that means?
It's, it's design elements that we want to have in the project. Part of the challenge for the engineer, as he presented it to us, is we have several conceptual designs from varying configurations and costs, and they need some guidance on which aspects of those designs we want included.
So my second question is, what does it mean about the 30% design?
So that's a, that's an engineering term, where the engineering firms go through actual engineering, preliminary design work, to come up with beyond a conceptual design, an actual engineering design, but not the complete design. Some projects can go forward to construction from a 30% design. It's a design-build concept, where they basically take the 30% design and construct it, modifying if they need as they go. But it is also kind of a point that we can then go to main DOT and FED and try to get funding. So we have to get to this point of more of a concrete design that is going to represent our final project before we can really apply for funding.
And do you have an opportunity, when you see that, to make modifications?
Yeah.
All right.
And it also, Donna, just to add on to what Carol said, 30% design is a sort of a benchmark for permitting as well.
Right.
I understand that. So again, following the themes that we've heard tonight about barging, about parking, about everything else, I'm just going to say it, this is just more money being thrown down a rattle, which is what we've done over and over, because it doesn't solve the long-term problems that we have. It may serve, solve some safety issues, which is really important, but, you know, what time, millions and millions of dollars, even if it's not tens of millions of dollars, is this the best way to spend on that?
Thank you, Donna. Other comments from the public? Jackie?
I'd like to address Richard's comment about broadly barging at the Stone Pier. I became aware of order selectmen memo to GEI about the barge ramp, I can't, I don't remember the wording exactly, it's brief, about addressing the barge ramp at the Stone Pier. And that caused me to remember about a year ago, when DEP was here, and Lenny made the point that his big truck, I assume it's a cream truck, has to come on Lionel Land's larger barge, which cannot currently fit, I believe I remember this correctly, cannot currently fit into the ramp space at the Stone Pier. And Lenny said that if he, for whatever reason, is unable to land at Bennett's, Chabig residents will have to wait longer for their power to be restored. You know, we all know that, as, as Colley said last spring, Bennett's Cove had suddenly become unusable, and he used the Stone Pier, and that could happen again. You know, Bennett's Cove was unusable for, I don't know, a month or two, and he operated primarily out of the Stone Pier. So my point is that I would think, you know, in the design of the barge ramp at the Stone Pier, that accommodation of the larger barge should be considered.
Thank you, Jackie. I think, just to clarify, what Lenny said was. I think, just to clarify, what Lenny said was he couldn't get out here as often if he had to come to the Stone Pier, because plant can't come as often if the Stone Pier is all that's available. But all of Lenny's equipment can go on to either of the two barges, and one of the barges, Lionel Plant, can easily land at the Stone Pier.
May I continue with my memory?
You can continue with your memory. I would suggest that we take it up with Lenny directly, because I'm pretty confident in what I'm saying.
We'll take that up with Lenny.
I'd be happy to call Lenny tomorrow. And when you say the larger barge, you mean the Gains?
Well, there are only two, aren't there?
Correct. And you think that Lenny said that he has a truck that can only ride on the Gains?
That's my memory.
Okay. I will get back to you.
It's pretty distinct.
I can clarify this.
Please.
So, I think I understand the discussion that you're talking about. What Lenny, if my memory serves me right, was trying to explain was that, so there are several times, a couple of weeks out of the year, where Lionel Plant does maintenance on the smaller barge, in which case the larger barge is their only operational barge. And that barge cannot fit at the Stone Pier. So, I don't think it has anything to do with the vehicle that's coming. It's the capacity of the barge that can land.
Perhaps.
I think that's the, it's the company and the size of the barge that then, if that barge was out of commission and the bigger barge were in commission, then CMP couldn't get to us.
I think...
I think that's probably what you're getting at.
That's what I remember.
Ultimately, would still be worth considering.
I may have missed, you know, the...
But there still is a timeframe where Lionel Plant can only accommodate with the larger barge that cannot fit at CTC.
When they're maintaining the, you know, or the Lionel Plant. Yeah.
Yeah. Which I think is all relative to...
Yes.
Taking into consideration.
Barge name being the same as the name of the company can be confusing as well.
Pardon?
The barge name being the same, one of the barge names being the same as the name of the company makes for some confusing sentences. Sometimes Lionel Plant does not have the Lionel Plant available is a hard sentence for me to write down.
Got it.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments from the public? Jonathan, yes?
I think before the town spends millions of dollars on Stonewall, perhaps, I've said this many times before, but I think you need to go and revisit the 76 barge in your board with the arm. Because with the hard effort of CTC and everything that they do, they have vessels that can accommodate passengers today, doesn't account for the next 10 years, 20 years, 15 years. If you're thinking down the road, the most efficient form of transportation, waterborne transportation, is roll-on, roll-off, which means car ferry. If you do car ferry, that means you already have a army corps engineer dredge channel, and you have barge landing. If you improve the barge landing, you put cars and passengers on it like you do at Shelter Island, Washington State Ferry System, you name it. That's the best way of moving people and vehicles. It doesn't mean you have to move all the vehicles all the time. You can move commercial vehicles. You can also put limits on the cost so that you're not getting a lot of vehicles all the time, but you're able to logistically move freight, and you're doing it efficiently so that the deckhands on the CTC vessels don't break their back for 20 years of their careers because we're moving freight by hand. It improves the on-and-off exchange on both cousins and Chavik, because when you mechanize logistics on a roll-on, roll-off ferry system, it gets very fast. I've seen, you can go to Egypt, you know, going across the Suez Canal, it takes five minutes to unload 40 cars and 200 people.
Yeah.
So, but I really think we should revisit what we can possibly do with DOT and what we can possibly do with the tally armor. Because if you're thinking long-term, I wouldn't spend the money on just trying to do floats or whatever else off the Stonewall. That being said, I will say that the area of the Stonewall variety is where the ledge is, is a good area to move CTC to, because you have ledge there that you know is there, because they couldn't get rid of it. But you could bump out the wall a little bit there, maybe with a wood type of platform that you can build ramps and everything else that you know is not going to go anywhere. It's a very solid part of Stonewall. But aside from that, improvement of the existing barge ramp and widening of it is almost what private agency, you know, I think, you have to design a transportation system. That's the only way to do it for the long term.
Can I sit up here and I'll say we're done?
Jackie?
I have a question. I think I know the definition of roll-on, roll-off. Does that mean, am I correct, that that means that a vehicle drives down to the barge in Portland, and they drive off frontwards when they arrive at Bennett's Cove?
That is one way that it can operate. And a roll-on...
I know, but is that the definition of roll-on, roll? Don't know. What is the definition of roll-on, roll-off?
You drive on and you drive off.
And, well, I've heard that Lionel Plant defines themselves as a roll-on, roll-off.
They drive on and they drive off.
They're roll-on, roll-off.
But some, to your point, Jackie, some roll-on, roll-offs enter from the stern and leave from the bow, for example. If you go to Bainbridge, Washington, you drive on one end of the barge, you drive off the other end of the barge. If you go to Lodi, Wisconsin, there's a barge that goes across Lake Wisconsin that does the same thing. There are questions of scale. I'd like to focus the conversation if we could.
Well, some of you are aware that many vehicles back off the barge at Bennett's Cove.
Yes.
What?
They're still rolling.
Oh, okay.
They're rolling.
They are still rolling. Okay. Other comments from the public? Okay. There was a motion on the floor. Do we need to read it again? I think it's pretty big, boring. All in favor?
Aye.
Five? Okay. So, Vika, are you going to send that off to them? Or Carol, you're going to send that off to them?
I will send it to Vika to send it out.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you. All right.
I mean, they've seen it.
Other business? Did you get any other business from your standpoint?
Yeah, so I just got one that might make you choose to do or not do a motion. I received a phone call from the Chavik and Cumberland Land Trust asking for a letter of support and a contribution from the Select Board relative to removal of the retaining wall at the hook. So, Indian Island and the land trust is working through a permitting process. They are asking for a letter of support from the town and a small contribution. I told them that I would bring that up in terms of the letter of support, the contribution. It would either have to be contingency or town meeting vote, and that's for our board to make a decision. So, they're doing a lot of, and she did say that Carol knew a lot of information about it. If there's, there were some questions, but I guess they're applying for permitting to remove the wall, to do sand dune restoration, several other things. And they're hoping that the town and Haven had an involvement with that location in the past could just show that they're supporting their progress. And if they'd be interested, contribute a couple thousand dollars towards the project.
Thoughts from the board, Carol?
Yeah, so I've been in discussions with the land trust on this, not the property owners. But they are applying for three different grants. Friends of Cas, Casper Bay Asteroid Project, Maine Outdoor Heritage Trust, and the Sand Dune Restoration Fund. And having gone through this a few times, I don't think yet you want to write like a blanket support letter. I would like, Penny and I are scheduled to meet this week. So, I think what I would recommend is that, you know, we get a little bit more information about the project, because I think it has multiple elements. And then I can bring that back to the board, because I do think we need a little more. My understanding is, separate from those three grants, which wouldn't need a letter of support, is their intention to remove the retaining wall. It has to be removed in the next month due to restrictions in the timeframe. They may not be able to accomplish that because they're pretty late getting started.
Is that based on wildlife activity?
It's based on the DEP regs that they have from like October 15th to March or whatever to remove it. So, that's a totally separate thing. And I guess I'm not 100% clear on what they're looking. I understood they wanted funding to support one grant specifically. Yeah, so I think we need a little more information.
I told her that I would get ready back to the board, but that's the best that I could do.
I'm all in favor for them, you know, supporting restoration of the hook. I think the majority of the community is. I think we just maybe need a little more information. And I think it's important when we do provide these letters of support that we understand what the project is we're supporting. That's just our obligation to the community. So, I will, and I will meet with her this week, and then I can maybe send an email explaining, and then we can take it...
Probably put it on a future agenda.
Yeah. I don't think anything needs to be done before our next meeting. So, the first deadline is after that for the grants. I did check that.
I, it was just that...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unexpected call at the end of the day. And I told her I brought it in front of me, but...
Yes.
So, I think she would, there was a worry from her. She had heard I was going to be out, and so I think she just wanted it...
Yeah.
No.
Delivered before she thought it'd be too late, so.
Any other?
Nothing that would require you to make any kind of motions, no?
Okay. Any other business items? Or anybody else on the board? I have one, and Vika's kind of tied into it. Vika and I spent some time on the phone with Mitch, Vika a couple of times, and me a couple of times, and then today together. I think Carol had suggested in a meeting, several meetings ago or a couple of meetings ago, that we try to have Mitch establish a presence here, perhaps in Vika's absence, just to have another person in the office, but also check back in and have him check in on where we've gotten to since we first started working with him. And another topic that's come up as of late, through some of the work that Herb Main is doing, trying to organize documents, through some of the frustrations that all of us have had when we try to find, or Vika has had, when we try to find documents, the concept of institutional knowledge and continuity. Boards change over time. And so, while he was here, if he was able to spend some time with each one of the board members and talk about those things, and combine that with him being here for a bit during Vika's absence, he's not hugely available. He's got some other things going on that are keeping him down. But he was interested in those topics. So, if the board agrees, we do have money in the budget to spend on that. And it seems, and Vika, I'm speaking for you, if I say it seemed like a pretty good idea to have him work on those things?
I think there would be value in him coming out and kind of getting a recap of where things started a little bit over a year ago to where things now, having him be the person who was hired to walk the board and myself through some mishaps, and then seeing whether in his, you know, professional opinion, he thinks that there is an improvement or not. So, I think to kind of wrap up the taxpayer funds that were expended for that benefit, there would be value on that, absolutely.
So, that's it. I don't think we need to vote. Is the board in favor of that?
Thank you for looking into that.
Okay.
Sorry, I did.
Okay, that's the only other one I had that was other business. So, we can move on to communications. Vika, anything to speak of?
I didn't have anything written down.
We had the one email that came up in our earlier discussion that came to everybody on the board. There were a couple of other emails, but I think they've been represented before. Oh, nothing? Items to be placed on a future agenda? I have to follow up with a stakeholder group and dollars for facilitation relative to Bennett's. And I've got to follow up on a letter and/or money of support relative to hook restoration efforts. Carol's going to learn more about that. Those are the only two items I had from tonight. We have an ongoing list of things. I would suggest that we might have a proposal back from GEI by our next meeting.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And I think also, we have another grant. We have two grant funds that we've received that we've received a proposal for to implement them. So, I kind of would like to take that up at the next meeting. And so, I have those in hand. I can give it to Vika.
Good.
And Vika, just while I'm on that topic, that $50,000 grant that we theoretically got, we never received...
Still nothing.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
One of, well, it's been pushed back, but you will have at the next agenda item board of updates. So, you had asked for different boards to provide written or in-person updates. And so, planning board, Board of Appeals, Coastal Waters, Broadband, there are several of them that have provided me information that I've pushed them off from this meeting onto that meeting. So, there'll be a lot of that for you to look at.
Are they coming to the meeting or just presenting on board?
There will be, so, the planning board, Broadband, Coastal Waters, there's, I think, I'd have to look back, but there are a handful of them that are going to come. And so, I know Eric from the planning board is planning on coming, in case if you have any questions on his report. Michael Porter will be here relative to Broadband. I'm assuming Herb is going to be the representative for Coastal Waters. So, they all have, you know, little reports that they've provided.
And I think it would be good to hear from Board of Appeals, too. The two, the two...
I did get a report from Board of Appeals, yes.
Yeah.
Eliza?
I'm concerned with the comments that were made by Pips at the beginning of the meeting, and I wonder if it would be a good idea to hear from all committees, since we do give them money and...
I don't want to enter into that fray, but I wondered...
So, there is, in a couple of weeks coming up, a meeting where the boards that come to the town and ask for contributions are, they're starting to roll in, I got some from the comments today, several documentations that will be brought to your attention that you go through, and based on that information determine whether you want to make a recommendation or not into the upcoming budget. I think this particular thing is, there is, I think, work with the code enforcement officer that they can discuss and certain other avenues that I think for a whole board to be involved, I would be a little hesitant of that recommendation, just because there are several other projects that you have that...
And the second thing is the application of the guy with the fellow was submitted, and so, looking forward to that.
And when do you hear? Do you know when the timeframe is that you hear?
We should know by March whether we have a fellow or not.
And then we would appropriate money in this upcoming budget?
So, yeah, so the appropriation is up to $15,000, but the rise is working on a pretty good deal to get a discount relative to having them have housing, in which case that number would go down. And I have not added that into the budget, which I can just on the high end, but it just happened.
I don't have a handle on what we would need to put in the budget if we have found housing, or how that will all work. I just want to get the fellow and then...
I've increased the budget quite a bit for this next round, so I didn't want to add an extra $15,000 without knowing whether we have a good chance or not, so.
Okay. Other agenda items? Carol?
Well, and I forgot under communications, so if you don't mind, Carol, you did this. So, the Maine Forest Service who came out and did the wildfire talk contacted us, and I forgot, we talked to them this week. And they have a relationship with a group called Team Rubicon, which, you know, works in communities, generally post-disaster, but they have, they're all over the country. And they have contacted Maine about doing some sort of fire suppression projects. And for whatever reason, Maine Forest Service called us and asked us if we were interested. And so, we said yes for now, but we need to roll Ralph into the conversation. But they would come out for a couple of days... But they would come out for a couple of days and, you know, I don't know, 20 guys, and do some work in an area that needs cleanup. Deer Point comes to mind. And they thought, they've seen Deer Point, and that's what they were considering, too. So it's basically to help reduce the fire danger of a particular area. It's not necessarily that we think about cleaning up all blowdowns. It might actually be brushing out the road, making sure, you know, equipment can get in and out, that kind of thing. But they, you know, they know what they're doing. So anyway, when we have the next meeting with them, I'm going to try to see. They're trying to set up another meeting with Team Rubicon. I don't know who else would want to participate. Ralph needs to be in a loop in Vika's absence. Bob, maybe you want to join us? So anyway, it sounds like that could happen in the early, you know, in the spring, like May they were talking about. So that would be nice.
Not going to be gone for long.
Yeah.
She's a week out, but she's here, so.
But what triggered my memory, what triggered my memory is that we have to put up the crew. And so we have to feed them and put them up. That's all we have to provide. And so, but that's why I thought of what Aliza just was talking about.
How big's the crew?
Don't know, but I got the feeling it was like 10, 20 people, probably. And it's a veteran-oriented group, so it's a bunch of veterans and other people. But it's kind of initially was set up for veterans to, you know, do some community service.
Maine's actually a great time because it's not still cold, but it's not summer crowd yet. So, yeah, perfect. All right, great. So that's communication. All right, let me finish up agendas. I think we are ready now.
You have to approve the minutes.
Oops. Item seven, to approve the minutes from January 15, 2025.
I'm hoping we approve the minutes from January 15 to 2025.
Second.
Motion by Carol, second by David. Discussion? All in favor? I need to recuse myself because I was not here. So four, yes, and one, no votes. Yes, abstention. Thank you. That's where I was at before. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion on item nine on the agenda? David?
Move to executive session to discuss personnel and approve committee applications.
Second? Second by Richard. All in favor? All right. See ya.